All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No need for a roll call. Everybody's here tonight. Full business approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2024 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2024 as presented.
We'll move.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda? No. No takers. Item number two is presentation certificate of appreciation for years of service. Council President Don Stenica will present myself and Councilmember Carrie Brungard with certificates for 15 years of service to the city.
Mayor, servant, if you'll be down here, please. Back when they were young, in 2009, the, both of them were elected and sworn in in April of 2009, Ward Four and Ward Three as councilmembers and councilmen. In the next 12 years, Tony served there and then in, in whatever it was. About three years ago, he was elected to be mayor, but he moved up and moved down to Ward Four. And Carrie still continues to serve. So this is for their recognition of their 15 years of service from 2009 to... President? Tony Field, 15 years of service, just very appreciative. Eric Brungard, for his 15 years of service. Congratulations, guys. Now, when that picture comes out in the papers, you can cut it out for your draft speaker myself.
Thanks, Tom.
Congratulations, guys.
New business. Item number three is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointments. There were five positions on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board with terms that expire December 31st, 2024. The positions were advertised and seven people applied. Lansing Parks and Rec Advisory Board met on the 14th of November and reviewed the applications. Lansing Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommends the appointment of Adam Bremer, Gavin Fry, Eric Caldwell, Tabor Madill, and Noreen Lahon to the Lansing Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending 31 December 2026. So I need a motion to appoint.
So move. You'll point.
Have a motion and a second to appoint. Any discussions?
Just want to do a quick recognition of, the board has increased in numbers greatly over the last several years. It's got a lot to do with Jason and Christina, how they're doing things over there, and also the interest in the people in the city, in the youth, and training and helping out. So there was, at this time, there were more applicants than there were positions. So it was nice to see that, and it was also nice to see that people already on the board wanted to serve again. So I just want to recognize Jason for that.
I want to make a comment. I'm a non-voting member of the board, but it's a large group, but they work together. If there's an ego, it's checked at the door. And a lot of the members are also coaches of the different various sports going on. So, and it's an advantage to have them on there, people to have their feet on the ground, so to speak. So, but they're a great group. They really are, and I'm glad we have them. All have them.
Anyone else? All right, I have a motion and a second to appoint.
Call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is Tree Board, Tree Board appointments. There are four positions on the Lansing Tree Board. The positions were advertised and four people have applied. Tree Board met on 14 November to review the applications. Tree Board recommends the appointment of Cassandra Collins to the Lansing Tree Board for a term ending December 31st, 2025. Noreen for a term ending 31 December 2026, and Kathy Gledhill and Mike Stevenson for a term ending 31 December 2027. So I need a motion to appoint.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to appoint that group. Call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Term number five is easement acquisition for City Project 2024-04, Ida Campbell Street Sanitary Sewer Relocation Project. The next step in the Ida Campbell Street project is to acquire the necessary temporary and permanent sanitary sewer easements for the construction of the improvements. SMH consultants are awaiting council approval before meeting with the affected property owners and negotiating agreements. Enabling resolution for condemnation will be filed later in December. And we have asked the consultant to move forward with acquisition as quickly as possible. Offer letters will be mailed next week. The opinion of just compensation for the temporary easements, permanent easements, and cost to cure items as determined by the city's private real estate appraisal company, the Simmons Company, is $27,800. Funds will be taken from the utility acquisition account. So I need a motion to authorize staff and SMH consultants to complete easement acquisition activities for the Ida Campbell Street Sanitary Sewer Relocation Project.
We'll move. Second.
I have a motion in several seconds. Any discussion?
Have we acquired any of these?
For this project? No, sir.
Pardon me?
For this project? No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six is Memorandum Resolution B-13-2024-B, Resolution authorizing staff to waive the requirements of KSA 751120 Alpha, Alpha, as they apply to the city of Lansing for the year ending December 31st, 2024. Since Resolution B-13-2024 is a resolution that must be passed annually to exempt the city from complying with general accepted accounting principles. In the state of Kansas, it's permissible to prepare financial statements using the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, the KMAG, or a cash basis of accounting. This aligns the audit financial statements more closely to the financial statements used throughout the year. So I need a motion to approve Resolution B-13-2024.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is approval of annual cereal malt beverage licensing. Each year, the businesses that hold a CMP license must renew this, must be renewed by the city and the state. Required renewing and applications has been done. There are no changes to the applications from previous years. Licensing fee and Kansas State stamp tax have been paid for 2025. So I need a motion to approve the cereal malt beverage license renewal for Aldi Inc. at 1217 North Main Street, Lansing Quick Stop at 601 South Main Street, Quick Trip Number 188 at 1205 North Main Street, Reeves Nevis Inc. doing business as Finish Line at 506 North Main Street, and Truman Town Center LLC doing business as Woody's Gas Express at 1094 H Road.
We'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number eight is executive session preliminary discussions of acquisition of real estate property. Need a motion to enter into executive session for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real estate property. KSA 754319 Bravo Six for 15 minutes, beginning at 7:11 and ending at 7:26.
We'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Okay, are we moving there? Okay.
Make a motion to return to open session in a second.
A motion and a second to return to open session.
Call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Motion passed. We return to open session. No binding action was made in the executive session. We will go to reports. Department heads. I need department heads. Got quite a few of them in here tonight.
Only got what he wanted, so he's...
Yeah. City attorney.
Not to report, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you guys recall, when the whole Leavenworth County Fire District Number One thing went to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court ruled that Fire District One as an entity remains until the county terminates it. They compared it to an empty shell. There's no mill levy levied for it next year. The city has already terminated our end of the agreement. However, Leavenworth County Fire District One technically remains in 2025. One of the things some of you guys might remember from five years ago was when we did our petitions to exclude Lansing from the fire district's boundaries. I think five years ago, if you guys recall, we had to rescind our 18-month notice. I think they thought that meant we were rescinding our petition, so they never took action on the petition that we filed four or five years ago. That means we would need to refile that same petition that we did four or five years ago. So I've given each of you guys a copy of that. And we do have some pretty good community partners that we feel like will work with us and will be able to hit that 10% threshold pretty easily. But if you guys look at that petition that is on the dais, that's what we would be distributing to a handful of people. But it also shows like the property, a photo of the property that would be signing off on it, as well as the property card. So I would ask you guys to take a look at that. Feel free to sign that. Everyone who's on that should sign that. And then bring that back if you can, at your convenience. So, again, it's important to get this petition filed in early 2025 so we can take Lansing out of Fire District One. I guess it would be starting in 2026.
What you're saying is every resident of Lansing has to do this?
No, 10%. Just 10%, and the city already owns 300 acres. I know there's a couple of community partners that also own hundreds of acres. Yeah, so, so yeah, but I think it would be good if... I think it would be good if the governing body did it, though, so.
My spouse also signed?
I believe the spouse would also have to sign.
If it's jointly owned property, you need both owners to sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Along those lines, too, and again, a lot of this stuff is fresh because there was a recent court case between High Prairie and Leavenworth County. Since Fire District One remains, but the board goes away on December 31st at midnight, the Board of County Commissioners would then be the Board of Fire District Number One. They are happy to let Lansing control our own destiny. I think the county commission is in favor of Lansing having local control, just the same way we are. So that's a good thing. However, since the Fire District still technically exists, we'd probably have some type of contract at our next meeting, basically saying, "We're agreeing to service ourselves, and the county would pay us $1 for that." So again, that would basically being the county acting as the Fire District One Board, allowing Lansing to service itself. So, so that will be coming up at the next council meeting, most likely. Or there's a possibility, if we need it faster, we might have to call a special meeting. Clear as mud, or Councilman Clemmons, do you have any questions?
Yeah, in the packet, I may want to point out, when it gets to the legal description on the sheet that you fill out, the last one, called a report card, Tim has provided that from the GIS that has the legal description on it. You just transpose from that page into the one that you signed.
Yeah, exactly. So, clear as mud, I suppose, but, but anyway, I think that's just something that, so we can formally redraw the boundaries of the Fire District and depart from it in 2026. So, but again, for 2025, we'll still have that local control. It'll still be the Lansing Fire Department. The county is contracting with us to service Lansing, so. Any questions on, on the petition, or the purpose of it, or anything like that? I know Mr. Clemmons and Mr. Kirby were at that meeting as well. Do you feel like, did I cover everything? Is there anything I missed on that?
I didn't cover it well. I just, you know, I was still here this, you're charging me, why am I, you know, on the mill? You know, and they think they're paying what they paid for Fire District Number One, and then we're charging them. You're only paying the same that you paid for. You're paying it to the city instead of Fire District Number One.
Yeah.
Fire station isn't going away.
Yeah.
Going to be staffed. We've got equipment. We're getting new equipment.
Yeah.
And so, there's still a lot of misinformation out there about how this is all going down.
You know, the funny thing is, too, from a purely operation standpoint, I feel so good about this. We have a great chief coming on board. We have great captains on board. We have great firefighters and volunteers on board. We have top-notch equipment. We have a great station. From an operation standpoint, I think we're in great shape. It's just legal hoops we have to jump through. So, so that's, that's where we're at on that. So I did want to mention that, so. Good. And then, one other thing I wanted to mention. Josh and I have had a really, a couple of good discussions with the person who's trying to develop the property on East McIntyre Road. I know he saw the meeting, and he did want us to pass along that, I mean, he, he does want to collaborate with the city. He wants to keep an open dialogue with the city. So he did throw out there, if there's any council members that have any ideas or anything that they want to kick around or anything like that. I think he's more than willing to have those conversations with you all. He's willing to have those conversations with the school board. And I really think he wants to be a good neighbor to the adjacent property owners as well. I know after he saw that meeting, he was looking at updating the green space on the far east side of that subdivision. So there's an extra buffer between some of the residents who were there and where the houses would be. So I did want to throw that out to you all. If there's any ideas you have, or if you want to talk to him or anything like that, he did want to extend that to you guys, and I'll also extend that to the school board members as well when we're there next week. I just wanted to throw that out there. So feel free to reach out to me if you want to meet with him. Our work session in January, we would like to do that on January 23rd instead of the 30th. So please double-check your calendars and see if that works for you guys. The city clerk will be out of the country that week, so we'd prefer January 23rd if possible, so.
So we can't meet without her? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
That is what I'm saying. She's irreplaceable.
Oh, wait.
You know, speaking of employees being irreplaceable and people just going above and beyond, you know, we're, we're back here after five or six months. Jim McGee has just done a fabulous job overseeing the construction on this. I don't know if you guys recall, but when we were going over the bids for a lot of this stuff, one of the other bid packages almost had more of like a general contractor overseeing it. And that was tens of thousands of dollars more. So again, we, we had Jim and our staff kind of oversee that construction, saving our taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars. We couldn't have done this without Jim. He's just done a fabulous job. And we're so, so thankful for him and thankful for the work he's done these last few months.
That's on top of his regular job.
Exactly. So he's, he's done a fabulous job. We're thankful for him. Also thankful for Tish. I know this has been really a busy time for her and all the craziness going on. So, so she's done a terrific job. You know, another employee who was displaced for a while in the midst of all of this water damage, then she's working on payroll for 10 or 11 new employees on the Fire Department. Beth has been doing an amazing job the last couple of months. You know, you think about it, we're going from 60-ish employees to 70 in just a few weeks. And the way payroll works for the Fire Department is different than the way it works for the Street Department or any other department. The way vacation accrual and sick leave accrual works for the Fire Department, that's different from other departments. So I'm just so, so thankful to Beth and Tish as well. It's, we knew everything would be a lot of work when we did this five or six years ago. But now is the time when a lot of that work is taking place. So, just thankful to those two. Like I said, Beth is literally starting to set things up in payroll right now. So, it's, it's been a lot of work for her, and I'm thankful for all she's done. One final thing. This topic came up at a recent council meeting, but the condition of Great Life Golf Course. I want to give a big shout-out and, you know, an attaboy to Josh Gensler, Bill Lynn, and Dan Stady. Bill's our code enforcement officer. Dan's our building inspector. You know, we've, we've had a lot of grievances with the shape of the Great Life property the last several months. You guys have been aware of that. Homeowners' associations have spoken to us about it, too. So those guys, you know, they had difficult conversations with staff from Great Life. And some of the people from Great Life came out and met us in person at that facility. We walked through the building. We walked through those old metal sheds, and we were pointing things out to them. And they were pretty receptive to most of the things we were asking them to do. Again, with building stuff, the big challenge is keeping it safe and making sure people aren't getting in there. And they do have a lot of gates up. They have a lot of plywood over the windows and things like that. So they're trying to do a reasonable job on that. They did say they got bids for demolition of all the buildings, and that was a lot more than they were anticipating. So that's still something they're talking about and looking into. But I was just so proud of the way Josh and Dan Stady and Bill Lynn, especially Bill Lynn, handled themselves when we were talking to the staff from Great Life, talking about our expectations, talking about how we want to improve that for the HOA over there. Just really proud of those guys. And it's, it's not going to be improved 100% overnight. It's going to take time. But I was glad we had that conversation. And not only did we have that conversation, it was an in-person conversation, onsite, going through everything. So I thought that was a step in the right direction, so. That is all I have.
They mentioned what they're doing with the property.
They...
Just checking.
They did mention, I mean, people have reached out to them about it. Maybe to clarify, too, we were not talking to the owner. We were talking to more maintenance people, yeah.
I was just curious. Thanks, Tim. Now, we'll go around the horn, starting with Pete tonight.
Yeah, I would just like to thank Tony and Carrie for your years of service. You guys set the example for all of us. We just thank you for it. I had a, a couple of folks within Ward Four call me. They had some issues with their septic system. And I made a couple of phone calls, and within an hour, I had some real dedicated employees for the, for the city jumping on that. And today, I walked out there and I got several phone calls saying, "Pete, I don't know what you did." And it wasn't me. It had nothing to do with me. I take no credit. Just want to put that out, out there. But the city took care of business, and those people were getting the problems they had resolved, or at least to the best of the city's ability. And I wanted to jump on with Tim. He's mentioned a lot of great work by great people, but this city is loaded with great employees. And Tony was the guy that kind of solved the problem for some of the folks within our city that are having problems. You know, you mentioned a bunch of stuff about the move and everything it took to get this building ready, but every meeting we had over at the library, it was seamless. It didn't look like it took any effort. But I know that that's not true, and just I would like to shout out to everybody that was part of that. We didn't miss a beat. The town was running efficiently, and we had meetings the way we needed to. So thank you to everybody that was involved in that, especially the folks over at the library. And then, yeah, Tish and Beth, can't say enough about everything you guys have done. Thank you very much. But that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Pete. Dan?
Well, again, we say this every time we do go through appointments on the volunteers. We really do lean on our volunteers quite a bit, and it'd be hard pressed to do what we need to do without them. So even, even though they're not here in the room, I want to shout out, say thank you for doing the volunteering. And I echo what Pete said about the 15 years. That's a long time, talking about being on the position and being reelected every time by the citizens. You're doing something right. Appreciate it. What you said about Jim, every time I came in here, he was working hard. Not only was he overseeing people doing the work, he was doing work himself. And Terry and her crew over there, taking up the slack, setting it up for the councilmen, council to do their job. Appreciate it, even though all the people were dispersed wherever there was a spare office that could be added. Work never stopped, and I appreciate it. That's everything.
All right, thanks. Terry?
Beth and Tish, thank you for all your work. Terry?
I told you they were doing a good job, and you tried to tell me they weren't, and I said... Went round and round about that, so. Glad I didn't listen to you. I am teasing. I want to clap.
Well, you were. I was.
You never know in today's world, so. No, thank you to everybody. Jim McGee, great guy. It's all ahead.
All right, thanks, Terry. Don?
I've always said we have the best staff of any city staff in Kansas, and I stand by my guns on that. That's all I got, man.
Thanks, Tom. Kevin?
Yes, Tish, Beth, Terry, Jason, Josh, Tony, Chief, thank you all for your extra effort, especially in the last year or so, getting everything going. And if I see Jim or Bill, I'll shake their hand and thank them, too. I don't see them very often, but when I do, I'll thank them. That's all I have.
I would just sound like a broken record, because I agree with everything that's been said about all the individuals named, unnamed. Got a lot of people doing a lot of work here that we never see or hear about, so. It includes everybody, so thank you.
All right, Jane. Kate?
Oh, yes, kind of echo what everyone else said, and then the Merry Christmas tree lighting over the weekend was a good event. Really nice. See all the kids out there.
Got your name right.
Yeah, yeah, it did butcher my name, and hope it's cool there at those schools. Yeah, yeah, it did butcher my name, and hope it's cool, Mayor, that was cool, so, yeah, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Jake. Jesse?
Yeah, I did what everybody's already said, congratulations, Carrie and Mayor, on your achievements of serving the great people of Lansing for so many years, and thank you to everybody who was involved in repairing the tragedy that happened to this building, you know, and that's what it was, it was a tragedy to happen, this building to be in such disrepair, though it took a lot of work to get it to be this beautiful, so, thank you. Without that, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, call a roll.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
We are adjourned.